I looked everywhere from the first time I realized there were no plans.
I love you, please.
But it's open.
What's the pleasure of our board here? Minutes of February 16th for a joint public hearing with the planning board and the Beverly City Council. May I get a motion from anyone?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the minutes for the joint public hearing meeting with the Beverly City Council, which took place on February 16th, 2016.
Okay. Second?
So the issue with this one is that there are only five people in attendance, so only those five people are still here.
And they're all here?
Yep.
Good. All right. So who is the...
Everyone but Catherine and Wayne.
You were absent.
Right. I thought there were three others absent.
Well, I meant just of everyone.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay.
Wayne and I were both absent, right? And then Ned.
Should we read the minutes into the record?
If you so desire, Chairman.
What a great idea.
Motion to disapprove that?
The change, the potential change. Would you like me to begin?
All right. We have a motion that's been seconded to approve the minutes as written. All in favor? Jay votes in favor. Motion passes unanimously among those entitled to vote.
Made for riveting television, if nothing else.
I'm sorry?
This will make for riveting television.
I'm sure it will. I'm sure it will. Our next item for business is Open Space Residential Design Site Plan, OSRD, and definitive plan for Essex Crossing, One Pond View Lane, a request for a minor modification. The applicants are Jeffrey and Jennifer Arons. No legal notice, I presume, correct?
Correct.
This is not a hearing. Is there anyone here on behalf of you? If you'd like to come forward, either there or here, either way. We just need your name and address, please.
My name is Jeff Arons, resident of One Pond View Lane, new resident to Beverly. So thank you, Chairman, and board members, for taking your time tonight to listen to my request. The request I'm looking for is a waiver against zoning ordinance, Chapter 300-51, Roman numeral nine, which is related to the rear property setbacks for an open space. You've had my attachments of the building plans and also a survey that was conducted by a local engineer of the property line versus the proposed addition, and which shows a 20.4-foot distance from the tapered rear lot to the corner of the addition versus the current setback requirements of 25 feet. A portion of the property line is not parallel with the rear of the house, and looking to request the setback to be at 20.4 from the new addition. The lot is Lot 1 of an approved 16-lot open space residential design site plan with the Bozzi Corporation. My back property abuts the open space and does not have any public paths or trails associated with it. I have a neighbor to the right or to the east of my property, which is Bill Crowell, and he's reviewed my plans in the survey, and he has no objections to it, and I have an email from him, if you'd like to see that. And what I'm basically requesting is the board deem the modification to the approved OSRD site plan and to be a minor modification. Do you have any questions?
Members of the board? Questions?
Is there any access or easement to the public land in this area?
Behind his property is the common open space that will be owned by the homeowners association. There's no act... I mean, that's technically for their use. It's not public use, but the other open space is on the opposite side. This backs up... Well, there's the open space, and then it backs up to the daycare.
So this is...
The rear of his house space is Essex Street.
So this is private open space as opposed to the public open space?
That's correct.
And I just want to clarify the... And I didn't notice this before, I'm sorry. The plan says 20.6 variance required. We've been talking about 20.4.
The engineering drawings?
Yeah.
Shows 20... Yeah, then the engineering drawing is correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we act on that. You're not too interested...
We measured it from the foundation...
Okay.
Proposed foundation.
Were you just clarifying that 20.4 versus 20.6? Is that what you just said?
Yes, the plan shows 20.6.
Twenty... Sorry, 20 feet six inches, that's the...
Twenty feet, 20.6 feet.
20.6 feet. Oh, yes, 20.6 feet. Yeah. Whatever it shows on the plan, basically, is what we're proposing.
Okay. Not going to quibble over nature, too.
Well, if you were to approve 20.4, you would be short.
Have to come back one more time.
Yeah.
No other questions?
I have a question.
Sarah?
So this is the DiBiase subdivision, correct? And there's 16 homes in the subdivision? I'm wondering what the precedent is on a situation like this, and would we be seeing other homes possibly coming in to add a mudroom, or is that not a concern?
We could.
It's entirely possible.
This is something that we happened upon when he applied for a traditional variance request. The OSRD has a specific modification language that says they have to come back to the planning board for something like this that varies the setbacks rather than zoning board appeal. So we may. Yeah.
I would observe that some of the plans show that there is a deck or porch.
There is an existing 10-foot trek deck off the back.
Correct. So there are other structures, and not approaching this from a zoning point of view, I'm just saying there are other structures in the backyard that are closer to the open space than this proposal is.
And decks don't have to be reflected on the plan?
As far as I know, every house along, at least on my side of the street, has decks on the back.
Okay.
Did you look at the deck issue or question at all?
I did not, no.
I don't know what our decision states about decks.
I don't think we state...
I think the decks are allowed 10-foot.
Have a 10-foot setback?
That's what I recall, a 10-foot.
That would be the standard.
Can be 10... Right.
For zoning. In other words, a typical zoning setback from a rear lot line setback. My understanding, similarly, I don't know the specifics, is that decks are treated differently from the structures themselves, so I wasn't really so much pointing it out from a zoning perspective, so much as if people are concerned about things being closer to the lot line, there's already something closer to the lot line than this.
Okay. I do see the deck on one of the plans.
Do you?
Yeah.
And I want to point out again, my property in the back portion of it, a little more than, a little more than a half, is parallel to the back of my rear house, and then as soon as where this addition occurs, it tapers toward the house. You can kind of see it in the survey there. So I kind of got an odd shape in the back there. Great.
So do we have any kind of an issue that the gentleman has requested 20.4, and what he's looking for is 20.6?
I think as long as we're cognizant of it and make our decision appropriately...
Okay.
We can deal with that. I guess we could ask you, are you verbally amending your application, so it's for 20.6 instead of 21.6?
Yes, for 20.6.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Questions? Okay. I have a motion.
You may.
This is on whether it's minor or not first.
Right.
Move that the board find the proposed change constitutes a minor modification.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Barrett, seconds. Further discussion? All in favor? Chair votes in favor. Motion passes unanimously, and we need a second motion on the actual relief.
Move that the board grant the proposed relief of the rear setback from 25 feet to 20.6 feet for only this property as shown on the enclosed plan.
Well put.
Second?
Second, by Ms. Barrett again. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The staff report indicates that there's potential issues regarding erosion control or drainage. Does that need to be part of a condition if the engineer...
Um...
Or is that in conjunction with the building?
No, that's just conjunction with the building permit.
Okay. Any other questions? Discussion. All in favor? Chair votes in favor. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, board.
You're welcome. So we're still short two members. I suggest we hold off on our next item, which would have been concluding our discussions on the Rantoul Street project until we have one, if not both, which I think I'm told is probably going to be around 8 o'clock. Just so you're all aware. Okay?
Those chairs are comfortable, right?
So shall we move on to cross lane? So this is a public hearing, Open Space Residential Design, OSRD Site Plan Number 9-16, and definitive subdivision plan for 122 Cross Lane to create three new residential lots. The applicant is Benko LLC, and I'd like to have a motion to recess for public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hutchinson, seconded by Ms. Flannery. Further discussion? All in favor? Chair votes in favor. We are now in public hearing. Thank you. Would you like to read the legal notice, please?
I will. Notice of public hearing, Beverly Planning Board. Notice is hereby given under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81T, and Section 300-54 of the Beverly Zoning Ordinance, that the Beverly Planning Board will hold concurrent public hearings on Tuesday, July 19th, 2016, during a public meeting that begins at 7:00 PM at City Hall, Third Floor, Council Chambers, 191 Cabot Street, Beverly, Mass., relative to a definitive subdivision plan and open space residential design site plan for approval of a three-lot residential development on 4.2 acres. The owner applicant is Benko LLC, 2 Leather Lane, Beverly, Mass., 01915. The land is located at 122 Cross Lane in the R-22 zoning district and is shown on Assessors' Map 33, Lots 6A and 7. The applications and plans are on file in the Beverly Planning Department and are available for public review. John Thompson Jefferson.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Excuse me, Mr. Griffin. I think you're going to need to speak into a microphone. If you can bring that up closer to the mic, because we are on television.
There's a cordless mic, if you'd rather use that.
Give it a shot.
Testing?
There you go.
We are live.
The parcel of land is this 4.2-acre tract of land made up of two parcels here at 122 Cross Lane. Just to remind ourselves, here's Boyle Street coming up to Cross Lane here, and the soccer field, the youth soccer field, is here. Most of the land out back is part of the Sally Milligan Park Conservation Area. We've got some single-family homes to the northeast of the property here. And we filed several months ago, you will recall, an initial OSRD filing. We identified the wetlands on the property. We've got some stream of, a string of wetlands here along the northeast portion of the property. The orange areas were areas with a slope greater than 20%. We've got an existing house with a driveway that comes in off of Cross Lane, sort of turns around and heads back down out to Cross Lane. The wetlands, you will recall, were approved by the Conservation Commission, so there's an ANRAD recorded on the land here. And so we presented a yield plan for this particular development that involved four single-family houses, construction of an approximately 200-foot cul-de-sac here. This is a fully conforming cul-de-sac, meeting all the width, slope, curbing grades, requirements, and the like. We suggested that Mr. Carlson wasn't necessarily committed to building four lots on this piece of land, and we presented several different alternative concepts. This was the concept that I think most people preferred. In fact, the board voted to recommend this particular plan with some modifications. This was our A&R-style plan with a pork chop lot here at the back, locating a new house in roughly the same location as the existing house, trying to reuse the driveway alignment as much as possible for two houses here. We thought that this was a more sensitive use of the land, certainly less disruptive than constructing the larger yield plan type of arrangement. It provided us the opportunity to convey approximately 1.4 acres of land to the city for use in its conservation uses, and it would be, we thought, a nice connection between Sally Milligan Park and Cross Lane and Boyle Street, with certainly a very easy trail access that could be developed in that alignment well, without really getting into the wetlands very much. So that was Plan A that I think was preferred, and I think you'll see that it's very consistent with the OSRD plan that we filed. So here's our OSRD site plan. We did... There was a recommendation from the board that we get the frontage for the new lots off of a private way instead of off of Cross Lane with the A&R-style plan that we had shown on the initial filing. And so we've created a 40-foot-wide private way with a 20-foot-wide paved alignment. The grades and basically the location of this private way are pretty much right on the existing driveway. Three house lots again. The house on Lot 1 was pulled a little bit further back from Cross Lane than was shown previously, and this was primarily to take advantage of a depression here in this portion of the site. There's a nice ledge knob here that will have to be removed, but once you get that knob out of the way, it becomes really a nice location for a single-family house. We can have a couple of walkout lots on here, so you could walk out of the basement into a small rear yard. We provided drainage calculations to the city, demonstrating that a stormwater management feature here near Cross Lane would be adequate to meet any runoff, you know, volume or rate requirements. This stormwater management feature is not very deep. It's only about, I think, 18 inches or 2 feet of water at the most, and it's normally dry. So if you're driving up and down Cross Lane, you won't really see water in there most of the time. It doesn't really require the fence around the entire thing, because it's not that hazardous of a, that type of a detention pond, because the water doesn't get very deep. The other two houses were pretty much as shown previously, so we've got a house roughly in the location of the existing house here. It's a little bit closer to the street than the existing house. And in Lot 3, we've sort of moved this house back, I think, a little further than, well, we've changed the orientation, but basically trying to provide room for the stormwater management feature here in a short driveway off of the private way. We had the opportunity to discuss this plan with the Conservation Commission one evening a few weeks ago. They seemed to be okay with it. They were a little concerned that a portion of the stormwater management feature encroaches into the 25-foot no disturbs zone, and we can pull that back to get it out of there without affecting the function of the stormwater management feature. We had a meeting with the Parking and Traffic Commission. No significant plan changes came out of that meeting. We had an opportunity to go to the Design Review Board. Likewise, no significant plan changes recommended as a result of that. So we thought we were pretty consistent with what we had talked to the planning board about a few months ago. We did receive some comments yesterday from the Fire Department. They suggested that because there's three houses on a private way, they feel that a 90-foot diameter cul-de-sac would be more appropriate, that if it was only two lots off of the private way, they would be okay with a hammerhead-type turnaround, which is what we've got room for up here at the end of the cul-de-sac. And so I think that's sort of a mutually exclusive recommendation as compared to the approach that we had presented previously. And in fact, I think if we go to a 90-foot diameter cul-de-sac, we have a plan that starts looking like the yield plan. This, if I remember correctly, is a 100-foot diameter cul-de-sac, and this meets some of the subdivision... This does meet the subdivision regulations of the City of Beverly, but the Fire Department recommendation is 10 feet narrower than that, but it's basically the same issue here. This particular layout had a 6% slope on the driveway. We've asked for a waiver to allow, on our design, a 10% slope coming up the private way. We've included in our application the requirement to have sprinklers in the three houses, and, you know, the Fire Department is requesting that we provide some infrastructure to include a hydrant at the intersection of Cross Lane in our private way, and some other requirements that, again, I think start bringing this project back closer to the yield plan, and we'd like to, you know, to see if it's possible to keep it pretty much as shown here. And with that, I sort of would be happy to address any questions or comments of the board.
I'll just add, I have the referenced comment letters from the Fire Department, Parking and Traffic, and Engineering, to which we just received today, so just take the... They're divided by threes. Just take the top section and pass it on.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Do you have some to go that way?
I already gave those. Our thoughts, I was hoping to speak with the Fire Department before the meeting, but I was not able to. I think that we can, you know, that the plan that the applicant has shown is more attractive than alternative, and more appealing, and more consistent with what the OSRD ordinance, what the purposes of it are, and that we could hopefully find some, identify what the key issue or key concern is with the Fire Department, and find a way to address that. I know the applicant has indicated a willingness to have sprinklers and possibly to the hydrant location, and I think in the Parking and Traffic Commission, there was even a discussion of reducing the roadway to 18 feet and then having a gravel shoulder. The Fire Department was not present at that meeting, but, you know, even if it remains at 20 feet, I mean, I think we'd like the opportunity to have a conversation with the Fire Department, to get to the bottom of what their concerns are, and I think we can come to an agreement that doesn't require a complete change in the plan and unnecessary There is a 50-foot radius, correct, at the proposed... Not a radius, but it's... At the turnaround, right? It's 50 feet?
Yeah, so it's really more of a hammerhead type of setup, but we show 50 feet of pavement from this point to this point, and if you overlay the ash tow... What's the word I'm looking for? The dimensions of a hammerhead for a small truck, it meets this particular layout. So you would be able certainly to turn a fire truck around at the end of this. It would be more of a three-point turn or a five-point turn potentially, but it's obviously a different way of turning the vehicle around than the Fire Department would prefer. You know, I think that it's a relatively short private way. It's 200 feet long. You know, I think it's reasonable, even if they had their largest truck up at this site in the middle of a snowstorm, it's not unreasonable to back the thing out, but I think that, you know, the intention was that we would provide a hammerhead. And I think, you know, the... My discussions with the Fire Department were, number one, by the way, that they were okay with reducing the width of the narrow portion here, or the relatively straight portion, down from 20 feet to 18 feet. That really wasn't their concern, but their concern was more of the turning area up here at the top. They did suggest that we consider taking the Lot 3 and putting the driveway directly out to Cross Lane, because then you would only have two houses on the private way instead of three, and they felt that with two houses, it would be okay to have a hammerhead-type turnaround. So I don't think we're all that far away. We prefer to have the driveway for Lot 3 come off of the private way. We think it's a safer place for the residents, and, you know, we'd like to, we'd like to leave the layout pretty much as shown here. You know, I did draw out, for the purposes of discussion, a 90-foot diameter cul-de-sac here. I'd be happy to hand that out if you wanted to just take a quick look at that.
With... That depiction is with three houses?
Yeah. to look a lot like the yield plan here. Lot 3 is pretty much where Lot 1 was before. This house is about the same, and this house is about the same, and, you know, the only thing that's missing is Lot 4 with the driveway coming off of Cross Lane. So, you know, we were trying to avoid this. We don't necessarily like this strategy, but if the planning board felt that this was the way to go, we'd give it more serious consideration. I think that, as Darlene said, it might be possible to come to some sort of compromise with the Fire Department, and perhaps those discussions would be worthwhile.
I guess I would be interested in what the Fire Department has to say. I don't... I'm not sure. There are a couple of things I don't understand, the connections between. One is the grade of the road and the sprinkling. I don't understand why those are connected. Do you have anything light to shed on that?
Yeah. So there are some regulations that are, that are attached to the Fire Department's correspondence, but it does indicate that if we have a slope greater than 6% or some other criteria, such as you couldn't get your fire truck within 50 feet of the front door, then they're expecting sprinklers on all of those types of houses. And I think there's some other criteria as well, but the only one that we would, I think that we trip up on this one, is the slope of the roadway. And as I mentioned before, we were at 10% with the plan we had shown. Because this is a larger, flatter area, the slope becomes 12% with this plan, and we're perfectly happy to put sprinklers on the houses. We expected that, and it's included in our application, as I said. When... The Fire Department also has their own sort of regulations, and one of those regulations says that when you have three or more houses in a subdivision, it brings the required improvements up to a higher level. You know, I think two houses or three houses on a 200-foot-long cul-de-sac are not a particularly intensive development scheme, and so I sort of question as to whether or not that rule makes a whole lot of sense. And as I mentioned, I think it's mutually exclusive with some of the goals of the OSRD regulations, but I think that's where we'd like to have the discussion with the Fire Department.
Well, that's the other part. I mean, if the houses are sprinkled, it isn't so much a safety issue so much as getting the fire truck in and out. And a question I would ask is why, why can't the driveways, which are going to be paved, I presume, be considered for that purpose? I'm almost positive in other situations, we've taken those into account in terms of whether a fire truck could turn around safely.
I think that's correct. I think if you look at our application, we're assuming that, you know, part of the driveway, for example, coming onto Lot 1 gets used as the hammerhead for this, turning the, turning the large truck around, but...
Well, obviously, we're not the Fire Department, and these are questions I don't really understand the answers to them. So I personally prefer the plan as you've designed it. I'm okay with the house. You know, I think I was the one who suggested the house be moved on Lot 1, be moved closer to the road. I think it's fine back where it is. My concern in having it closer was to save more of the kind of conservation values of the property, the sloped areas in particular, but it seems to me if that house is going to go up on Lot 1 anywhere, either the knob or the hill is going to have to be cut back, so that's a trade-off. I don't... In fact, I think it's, it might be more desirable to have that house less visible from the street in terms of conservation values. So personally, I like that design. Anybody else want to comment on it? Or we have...
I concur, John. I like... I prefer this design.
Yeah. Anyone else have any thoughts, one way or the other? Just for...
Just for clarification, given the 90-foot diameter cul-de-sac, are we to infer that you would then be looking for a fourth? You said that it begins to look more like the yield plan. Does that mean you're looking for a fourth?
I think we would have to give that consideration. We haven't really figured out what the cost of all this is with that flat area, but it, you know, it's-- like I said, it starts to look a lot like the yield plan. I think it may, you know, we tried to reduce this down to keep it at three lots. It may be difficult to put in the 90-foot diameter cul-de-sac and all of the improvements that the fire department is looking for, and keep this with an economical three-lot project.
Okay, so in order to pay for this, in other words, you'd have to have a fourth?
It's possible. Like I said, we haven't really run through all the cost numbers yet, but I see that as being a potential discussion that we would have to have, yes.
Okay. Any other-- Ms. Matts?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the beginning, you were talking about the stormwater retention basin, which is barely, as I could see in the plan, encroaching upon the 25-foot disturbance zone. You said, "Well, if we have to, we can kind of adjust that and pull it back." So when you say by pulling it back, would that be impacting the roadway design, or the width of that roadway in any way, when you say pull it back?
No, it would potentially get a little bit closer to the house that we've shown on lot three, but we wouldn't bring it really, I don't think, closer to the road, and we're really just talking about moving one edge of it, you know, four or five feet kind of thing.
May I ask one more question, Mr. Chairman? Thank you. So I was reading through the Parking and Traffic's comments, which I know we've discussed, and so they are recommending some consideration possibly be given to shrinking the width of the roadway, if I read this right, from the proposed 40-foot wide to 18-foot wide?
No, it's the paved portion.
That's the paved portion.
So maybe you could describe what the paved portion would be as you've designed it.
Yeah, so we have 20 feet of pavement, which, you know, is certainly sufficient for two-way traffic. The recommendation to reduce the pavement from 20 feet down to 18 feet, we're happy with that as well. We did speak to the fire department about that potential change, and said that we could promise them a solid shoulder, that if the fire truck went beyond, the 18 feet of pavement would not sink. So we would probably put a foot of gravel with maybe a thin, you know, two or three inches of topsoil on that. That would be sufficient to support the fire truck, and they seem to be satisfied with that. So we'd be at 18 feet of pavement and at least a one-foot shoulder on each side.
It raises a good question, though, for me, too, is what's the purpose of the 40-foot right-of-way? What's going in there besides the roadway itself?
Other than, you know, a drainage swale on the northeastern side, really nothing other than lawn.
So in all likelihood, that's not going to look anything as built. It's going to look like an 18- or 20-foot-wide pavement area, and the right-of-way is indeed we're not doing streetlights. Are the utilities going through there?
Well, we have, you know, water lines, sewer lines, underground, you know, electric, telephone, cable, but-- and those are all in the private way, yes.
But-- and outside of the paved area?
No, some of those are within the paved area. I think the water and the sewer in particular are certainly within the paved area.
Yeah, I don't know why we would need to have a 40-foot right-of-way. Do you?
Typically required.
But that's-- it's typically required, because there are things that go in there, and this is going to remain a private way.
Because what?
So it's not like the city's going to go in and be putting any other things there. So I guess I would also just add my support to the notion of not only narrowing the width of the paved area, but that the right-of-way itself could be smaller, unless you tell me you need it for some other reason.
No, I wasn't hung up on the 40-foot-wide width of the way. I think we were just conforming to, you know, the minor subdivision regulations, if I remember, require 40 feet, and it's typically done, but it certainly could be 30 feet without upsetting anybody.
Yeah, okay.
I just had a few comments. I do prefer the three-home plan as opposed to the four-home plan. I think that's preferable to cramming in a fourth home into this parcel. And I think the 90-foot cul-de-sac is overkill for such a small development, and I think it adds a tremendous amount of impervious surface. And I also agree with the chairman about the 40-foot width. I think that could be reduced and still be sufficient. My other comment is regarding having to sprinkler all the houses. So it's not the distance of the cul-de-sac, it's the grade that triggers the sprinkling of houses. Is that correct?
Well, I think there's a number of things that could potentially trigger it. I think in this instance, you know, all of the houses were within 500 feet of an existing hydrant at Doyle Street. I think we could get a fire truck up to within 50 feet of the front door of each of those buildings, but there's no way we could get the private way built at a 6% grade or less.
Okay.
So in this instance, I think it was-- that was one of the things that tripped us up into the sprinkler requirement.
Okay. What is the grade of the drive?
We're about 10% right now, and if we go to the big cul-de-sac, it creeps up to around 12%. So in the 10% to 12% range.
Okay. I'm just thinking that those sprinkler systems are very costly, so, you know, if you were close to possibly meeting the grade, you know--
But reducing that from 90 feet at all doesn't bring you down to 6 regardless.
That's right.
Might bring you to 10, but not lower than 10.
That's right.
Yep, okay. That's all I have.
Sure.
Mr. Griffin, the fire department has included a list of their rules and regulations in the letter. Can-- are you able to specify which one of these, or how many of these rules and regulations you have an issue with? Just so that we know, when these negotiations take place with the fire department, we know what issues you're going to be discussing with them.
So the second item is, all two-way traffic road grades shall be a minimum of 24 feet, as we discussed. We're looking for 18 feet there.
Excuse me, but you indicated they were supportive of that.
It seemed to be, yeah, in our discussions anyways. But then we also got the letter that said, "Follow the," you know--
Right.
--"follow the form." But anyways, three homes or more shall have a cul-de-sac turnaround. That's the one we have, we're requesting a waiver from. We're not proposing a water main on this project, at least nothing like a fire line. We're proposing a two-inch line to come up and provide the potable needs for these houses and the residential sprinkler system. Hydrants shall start at the beginning of the project and be located not more than 500 feet apart. So in this particular case, one of the things that the fire department's recommending is that we put a hydrant basically down here on cross lane. That's something that we could consider. It does add to the cost of the project, but that's certainly something worth discussing with them. And then the water supply needs, 1,000 gallons per minute at 20 minutes residual pressure. We haven't done any water pressure testing here along cross lane. I suspect that this will not be an issue, but I don't know that 100% for sure, so we'll have to find out at the time of doing that testing. And then I think all of the other criteria are acceptable. On the back of the page, this is where we had those three items that relate to the sprinklers, getting your access road with 50 feet of the front door. We think we can do that with all three of those lots. The residential sprinkler system reference, as I indicated, we're okay with the sprinkler systems, and the unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet. They seem to, again, to be okay with 18 feet of pavement with a little bit wider shoulder to get you up to 20 feet.
So it's basically-- is it fair to say that it's basically the hydrant and the diameter of the--
Cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Mack.
Mr. Griffin, we're not doing sidewalks, is that right? You know, curbing your sidewalk?
Right. We requested a number of waivers from the subdivision regulations and from the OSRD regulations. For example, we've asked for a waiver for no street lighting, a waiver for no sidewalks, a number of things like that.
It seems to me that there needs to be further discussion with the fire department, so does it make sense to, you know, continue the hearing until further discussions are had, but express the view, or at least those have spoken, that we prefer the design that you've come in front of us with, including the narrowing of the way, not just from 40-foot, but the paved portion as well, and then come back so we can have some further guidance, and then talk in less hypothetical terms.
Makes sense to me.
It sounded like a motion as I got toward the end of it.
Oh, it sounded like that. Did you just second it?
Unless there was something else Mr. Griffin wanted to go over with us tonight.
So obviously, no, we're not meeting in August, so this will then come back in September.
Can I ask a question? Typically, and we haven't necessarily been doing this, there is a site plan, I mean, a site visit requirement as part of the OSRD ordinance. Since we're continuing it, I'm just extending that, as if whether or not people actually want to take a site visit for this one or not.
I've actually poked around up there myself. I bet you have, too.
Good guess.
Is it possible for you to put a stake, I mean, a stake about where the center of the turnaround would be, so that people can on their own--
The 90-footer, or the one that we propose here?
Uh, could you do both?
Sure.
And you could tie a 45-foot string to one, and a--
Okay.
If you want, and then we could go out on our own and do it, if people would like. It seems like a small project to have a full-blown site visit. I appreciate your mentioning that. Does that sound acceptable to folks?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we also get a couple of examples of 90-foot cul-de-sacs, just so we have a reference point to how large this is for this project?
Come to my street. I think I have one there. It's ridiculously large.
Okay.
And like a nice 45-foot-wide road that no one uses half of.
Okay, so we're going to visit--
Come on over to my house.
We're coming over tomorrow night.
Mr. Miller.
Question-- the last rule in regulation states, "The authority having jurisdiction shall have the final approval on any and all roadways that do not meet the above criteria." Is that us?
I think they think it's them.
I think it's them. "The authority having jurisdiction shall have the final approval on any and all roadways that do not meet the above criteria." That sounds like somebody's able to waive this.
Well, they apparently have waived themselves, because they're already-- but I understand from Mr. Griffin's comments, they're prepared to move the 20-foot down to 18, so it seems like these are not immutable. They just need to be satisfied that they're acting in the best interest of the public, for public safety, and their access for their equipment. Can't fault that.
Okay.
So I think they can do it.
We can't. Is it true?
No, I think we can, because theirs is just a recommendation.
Okay.
As I read it, they're recommending.
Yeah, I'm just not clear, who can?
No, we could do it. I'd much prefer that the fire department be having it.
Yeah, absolutely.
It doesn't make sense to me that the planning board could overrule the fire department on this. It just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, we're just power-hungry.
I wouldn't recommend it.
No, I think we can do it, because if it's a recommendation that comes to us, much as when we recommend on zoning ordinances to the city council, they make the final decision, and we make the final decision here.
It might be fair to say that we can, but we don't want to.
That's a good way to put it.
Okay.
So we didn't have a vote on our motion, so Mr. Mack moved that we table this till September, during which hopefully fruitful discussions will go on with the fire department, and then I'll come back and include it at that time.
I wish to second that motion.
It's been seconded.
Good, I wish to vote aye.
All in favor? Chair votes in favor, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah. Have a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
So move.
Excuse me, are we closing it or continuing?
Continuing.
To continue the public hearing.
I would move that we continue the public hearing to our September meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Miller is seconding?
I do.
All in favor? Chair votes in favor, motion passes. Hearing is suspended. All right, we can go back to our regular order of business.
So our next order of business is to continue our discussion and decision on special permit application number 149-16, site plan review application number 122-16, and inclusionary housing application number 09-16, to construct a five-story mixed-use building with retail commercial space on the ground floor, excuse me, and related parking, utility, and landscaping improvements at 480 and 482 Rantoul Street, the applicant is Beverly Crossing 480 LLC. I just remind people we've concluded the public hearing on this matter, that that hearing is closed, so there's no more public input on this matter. At the last meeting, we took a, whatever I call a straw vote, or at least an indication of how people were feeling, which did not result in specific ups or downs, it just gave indications of how people were looking at things. We reassured one member of our board at that time, so we decided, or the applicant asked, to continue this, and has submitted a request for continuation until this meeting. And as the opening description in our staff report states, we basically have three things in front of us. One is a special permit, which I remind the members relates to the size of the commercial use of the building, and only that. Otherwise, it's my understanding the building conforms with our as-of-right zoning. The only-- so the only special permit relates to that particular matter. There's a site plan review application, I believe that includes somewhat fewer parking spaces than would otherwise be required, and that's been explained as relating to a truck turnaround primarily, with the commercial parking being provided on the street. And then there's a inclusionary housing application where the applicant is providing the needed housing on-site, but is asked to reserve their right, which they have the right to do, by coming back to us if they wish, to designate places for those units to be done elsewhere than in the project. But if the project were being approved today, it would be approved with the understanding that the inclusionary housing would be provided on-site in the building. So at this point, I guess I'll ask the applicant, I mean, the public hearing is closed, is there anything you want to add at this point, before we take our vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that unless members of the board have terrifying questions, we feel that the president has been-- so you presented this--
Okay. Does anybody have a question they'd like to ask the applicant at this point? Okay? Sorry?
Correct. There's a special permit for parking. Correct. That's a special permit, yes.
I'm sorry, the special permit is also for the parking reduction?
Yeah. Reducing parking, well, and then reduce commercial. Reduce commercial.
Commercial space, okay. My apologies, I should have-- clear on that?
Do you want me to read this, or acknowledge that this was--
Yes, if you would please.
I just want to acknowledge that Mr. Mack, who was absent at the last meeting, has certified that he reviewed the testimony that was presented at the last meeting, and is eligible to act on this.
Okay.
I do have a question, John. John, could you just re-explain what you-- your last statement regarding the inclusionary housing permit application, and how that relates to-- you just mentioned if we vote on the site plan tonight, and I think I missed the end of that.
Actually, we're voting on their approval of their affordable housing plan, which is to provide all the required units, the 12% in the building. But they've mentioned during the application process that they wish to reserve the right to come back to us if they would like to move any or all of those units off-site, which would require our consent to do that. But they're saying that they're thinking about it, but for now, they don't have any alternative sites.
Okay.
And the project would be built--
So an affirmative vote on the housing permit application includes the right for the applicant to come back at a later time?
Well, my view is, they have that right--
Anytime.
--whether we discuss it or not.
That's fine, thank you.
So they are just kind enough to say that they were thinking about it.
Okay.
We're aware. Is that a correct statement?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a follow-up to that. So can any applicant move their inclusionary housing off-site?
Not without our permission.
Okay.
I mean, there's two things. They need our permission, they also have to provide some evidence as to the binding nature of that, what type of housing it's going to be. It has to meet a number of criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, anyone care to make a motion on this matter? Mr. Mack, since you were absent, why don't we let you discuss?
So I drew the short straw. Well, I'll do the special permit one. I would move that we grant the special permit-- I would move that we grant the special permit as the two requests for the permit on the reduction of the parking and the percentage of non-residential use. I believe that based on the criteria on the special permit, for special permits in our ordinance, that all the criteria have been rather readily met, in my view. I know that some, some members have expressed views about the scale of the project or the appearance of the project, but I don't believe that's within our purview to reject a special permit application on that basis when, when the criteria, criteria in the ordinance for special permits are clearly met. So I would move that we approve the special permit with all the associated findings in the decision.
Okay, that's been moved. Is there a second on that? Ms. Flannery, seconds? Any further discussion? Mr. Miller?
In the event that we approve the special permit for reduced parking, I think we should consider some additional conditions that have to do with encouraging public transportation and other considerations for, to decrease the need for parking on the site.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I think that I can amend my motion to that effect.
Okay.
Add that as a condition.
Ms. Flannery, do you agree?
I agree.
Consider it so amended.
Can you just repeat the condition, Wayne?
No, I'm looking. Somewhere here I have some conditions that it's spelled out.
On the second page of the staff report.
Second page of what?
The staff report.
The recommendation of the Parking and Traffic Commission to develop and provide information that tends to make them aware of the alternative forms of transportation that would reduce the need for parking. I think that's an appropriate condition.
Okay.
I'll just clarify. It was on, it was a condition made in the Parking and Traffic letter for Hardy Street.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In our discussions, they suggested that we also consider that for this project, and the applicant had agreed to that.
So I presume the motion also incorporates all of the comments from our various boards and committees as well? Ms. Flannery, agree?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, do I understand correctly that this would be a single vote for both permits?
That's the way it's been framed.
Yeah.
Right. Any further discussion? Questions on the motion? On the motion, all in favor? Chair votes in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. In favor, opposed? Abstention? One abstention. Motion passes eight to one. Eight in favor, no opposed.
Eight oh and one.
I'm sorry?
Eight oh and one.
Eight oh and one, thank you. Okay. Our next item for business then is to, I think let's go to the site plan. We do need to vote on the request for an extension of time to act on the site plan review application, and that's been forwarded to our planning department. That's what gets us here to this hearing tonight on the site plan. So can I have a motion to act favorably on the request for an extension of time? Mr. Matts, is it moved?
I'd move that we approve the requested extension time to act on the site plan review application.
Okay, is there a second? Ms. Flannery, seconds? Any further discussion? All in favor? Chair votes in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Now, on the site, I'm sorry?
I'm pointing at Jim since he's got the microphone for the motion.
Oh, okay. Our next step, item is the site plan review application itself. Mr. Matts, are you gonna make a motion to that?
Sorry, that's me. Pardon me. I make a motion that we approve the site plan review application incorporating the comments from other committees and departments within the city. I see no other special conditions thereof.
All right. Is that correct? Darlene?
Well, yeah, you already included it.
Need to mention the drainage alteration permit?
It's fairly standard. You can mention any other engineering permit, drainage and erosion control permits to be required, but that's also in the comment letter, I think, so.
Again, including, incorporating all comments from city departments and committees.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
All right. Any further discussion? This is on the site plan.
Actually, if I may, just, just two minutes. I just really kind of wanted to clarify, I think, some of the previous statements I've made, you know, and I think it's important too for people who are watching this on TV. This project, the way Rantoul Street is zoned, I want everybody to understand that the zoning is throughout Rantoul Street, not just one end or the other, which I may have erroneously indicated previously, and if I did, I do apologize for that. But the zoning is as such that it's for fifty-five feet and/or a five-story building, which is what was proposed here. So one of the things that we need to understand with the site, site plan review and approval, there are certain conditions that can be considered reasonable to recommend and certain others that are certainly not reasonable to recommend. And one of those certainly, I think, that was reasonable to recommend was done, is just one example I'll give, is parking and traffic, which they saw the traffic plan is kind of an in-and-out, and then they requested that it be this nice circuitous route, which, you know, would improve safety and so on. That certainly seems to be a reasonable recommendation for site plan review. It is not reasonable, though it might have been my preference or desire, it is not reasonable to recommend that a five-story building be chopped off and made into a four-story building. That's not a reasonable recommendation for site plan review. Which is not to say it wouldn't be my preference in this neighborhood, because it still may be, but it is not a reasonable recommendation. So I want to be clear on that, that I wasn't necessarily opposed to the site plan, but that's again, I think there's just a matter of personal preference, the way I view this building in the neighborhood. I also want to add to this is that, you know, it's my understanding from, you know, attending various functions here, that certainly Wendover now, Beverly Crossing has expressed its sincere interest in being a partner with the city, which I know a vast, vast majority of the city approves and welcomes. And I'm not saying that I don't approve or disapprove, that's not my place. I do feel that from time to time, I feel, a couple of comments I feel are a little bit, I don't want to say excessive, in that, you know, people look at the Burnham Street project and said, "Well, that didn't really add to the city's streetscape," so that was kind of a negative in some people's eyes. The Enterprise project was a little better, but maybe not so much. So what I look at, or at least what I see in paper, is that the two Rantoul Street projects, in my mind, look to be exceptional, exceptional on paper. I think it goes without saying is my hope for Beverly Crossing, if not my request, is to be exceptional. And if you want to have a very positive view upon yourself, as I think you deserve, because I also want people at home to know, they don't like to toot their horn, but I'm gonna toot it a little bit within reason, and that people should know that Beverly Crossing has been very supportive of Montserrat College of Arts in keeping it in the city, and they've also been very supportive of the Cabot-Sinaman project. All right, people should know that. So this is, this is a company, an organization, wants to be our partner with the city. But my request for every project is to be exceptional. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Matts is going to explain, I probably should do the same since I was pretty vocal in my opposition. It came to me that my, my concern about the project, as I think everybody knows, is that it was too big. It was too large. It was, the five stories is just too much. However, my, my real beef is with the zoning, and it's allowed by right. I do think that there's a problem with the parking, however, in reexamining that issue, going from one-eighteen spaces to one-oh-eight, isn't that significant? And given the reason behind it, to accommodate a neighbor, an associated business, I think, justified running the risk that there'll be sufficient parking. So that's the reason why my vote tonight changed from negative to affirmative.
Thank you. Appreciate the explanation. Anyone else? Any, want to say anything?
I guess while we're all making comments.
Like a confession.
I just want to reaffirm what I said at the last hearing, and that is, I think it's a good project, and I think this parcel has sat empty for way too long. I actually don't have a problem with the height of the building, and I'm happy to see the shared parking. I think that parking should be reduced if it's within a reasonable distance of, say, the Beverly Depot, so I'm happy to see that. My concern is definitely that it's a mixed-use project that has very little mixed use. I believe it's two percent of the building, and I think that's, that's, well, it doesn't meet the twenty-five percent threshold, which I think is, is too high to meet. I think that two percent is too low. And the Enterprise building is an example of a mixed-use project that has two percent of its building as its mixed use. So I would like to see that number a little bit higher. Ground floor retail space provides a superior interface with the community and gives the building an active and lively presence on the street. And one thing I think that applicants on this particular corridor should look at is flexible spaces on the ground floor. So perhaps at this point in time, the market doesn't look strong to have retail commercial office on that ground floor, but the market can change very quickly, and in five years, it could certainly be a transition time for it to be retail commercial office or other. So I think that's a consideration, is flexible spaces or maker spaces. They're very popular right now in, in planning, and I think that could be a possible solution or kind of halfway meeting point in future projects. And I also think that the project at one-thirty-one Rantoul is a great case study for projects that I would like to see in the future. I know that's right across from the depot, so makes it a little bit more achievable to have that ground floor be, be retail commercial, and also maybe the front forty or fifty percent of the building, not the back of the building. So not, not asking for front-to-back retail commercial on that first floor, but certainly that's a goal to look at in the future. And if we want that to be pedestrian-friendly and transit-oriented, I think those are goals to try to achieve. So I do think it's a good project.
Good. Thank you. Any, anyone else?
Sure, why not?
Go ahead.
My decision is just simply based on the statement here that says, "Before taking final action on the special permits, the planning board shall consider if the following criteria are met." There are six criteria specified, and I believe that this project as presented meets the criteria.
Thank you.
We're on the site plan, motion and seconded, right?
Right. The spare has a hand up. I don't know if he was looking for, okay. All right. On the motion, on the motion. All in favor? Chair votes in favor? Motion pass, oh, excuse me, are you voting against?
Abstention.
Abstention. Okay. Eight in favor, one abstention. Motion passes. And lastly, but not least, our vote is needed on the inclusionary housing permit application.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
This is probably for Darlene. The first amendment at I, the, the potential condition to approve elevation sample floor plans, is that, was that, those plans were not submitted or approved as part of the application, correct?
They were, they were.
Oh, they were, okay.
Yeah.
So we don't need to...
Everything was, everything was included.
So we didn't need, we don't need to include that as part of the, as a, or we do?
No, I mean, I kind of looked at these as most findings or criteria, just so you knew what you were looking at, but...
Then I, I move that we approve the inclusionary housing application. I don't think we need to specifically note that the applicant reserves the right to modify to move the units off-site. I think any applicant, as Chairman noted, can come back and seek modification and convince us that it's appropriate at that time.
Okay. Thank you for the motion. Is there a second? Ms. Flannery, seconds? Any other discussion? Questions? Confessions?
Just one clarifying question, very quickly. So presently is not the expressed desire of the applicant proponent to move them off-site?
Correct. It's my understanding.
Presently to leave on-site.
Correct. That's the point.
That's how it's shown on the...
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, on the motion, on the motion. All in favor? Chair votes in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So it'll be up in, what, six months?
Right. Project will be done in six months, right?
We did the two percent one, too.
Sooner the better.
We voted on the two percent.
Well done, as always.
Okay, then.
Okay, our next order of business, if we have one. Yes, we do. We have a request for a one-year extension of construction completion date on Manor Homes Development LLC. This is for Chapman's Corner Estates.
Can I suggest that at the same time we do their request for bond reduction?
Sure.
It says at least, but it should say reduction. And that's on the, if the board will note, there's a, three additional items that you, we added to the agenda.
This is eight B.
Eight B.
Eight what? B?
So we're doing six and eight. Yep. Mr. Griffin, welcome back.
I'd like to show you this overall site plan. So here's Royal Street on the right end of the five, I can name Birdwood Drive, and I can name it Birdwood Lane here. These buildings are the ones that have been completed as of this spring. I think the building has recently been sold for lot thirteen. We expect lot forty-seven to proceed certainly this fall. So I think we've got eight or nine lots remaining built here. The roadway is substantially complete. The developer is technically getting ready now to do some paving, probably within two or three weeks. He's gonna pave the final paving from Royal Street up around the circle and stop at lot twenty-six. And so it'll remain his binder in this stretch here. He's got curb cuts and sort of driveway open and set thirty blocks down here. And I think he can do Birdwood Lane as well. So there'll be perhaps another request for bond reduction later this year. Since the last time we came in front of you, he's done some petumina spurring, and he decided this is the reason for the ten thousand, in practice, a ten thousand dollar bond reduction, as I think, on right now.
So you basically want another year to July twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen?
Yes.
To complete the work, the infrastructure? Okay, why don't we deal with that one first? Any questions about that? Can I have a motion?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we grant the request for a one-year extension of the construction completion date to July twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Mack. Further discussion? All in favor? Chair votes in favor? Motion passes unanimously. And on the bond reduction?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we grant the bond reduction by eleven thousand, three hundred dollars to one hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Second.
And I note that the city engineer has approved that amount. Any further discussion? All in favor? Chair votes in favor? Motion passes. Mr. Barrett barely got his hand up there.
He's meant to leave the UK by now.
I see.
He is.
We can do the rest of his and do number seven last, or...
I'll leave it up here, which...
Oh, sorry, you need to use the mic.
Sorry about that.
So many projects, I'm getting confused.
So this request is to provide a modification to the board's OSRD approval as it relates to lot one at Sunny Crest Circle. This is the existing conditions plan, and I just want to point out that eleven is the ranch house located just on the right as you come up the hill from Bridge Street. The other house that was on the property is number fifteen, and this one will eventually be demolished. But eleven is the habitable structure.
But 11 is, is the habitable structure, that's the subject of this request. Here, we're showing the Sunny Crest Circle layout. There's Lot 1 again, and you can see that, you know, Sunny Crest Circle can be built without really affecting Lot 1 at all. The developer, PD Building, has a anxious buyer who would like to move into Lot 1 at the earliest, and so we're requesting that the board modify its condition, which requires that Lot 8, the open space parcel, be conveyed to the city prior to conveying any building lots. And the other requirement is that the, oh, Darlene, refresh my memory here.
The homeowners association?
That's right.
Be created.
Prior to conveying any lots. So at this point in time, you know, it's just so early in the process that we haven't had the ability to get those items completed. Lot 1 is, you know, standing and ready to go, and we'd like to get somebody in there if possible.
Somebody who doesn't mind construction, apparently, huh?
Apparently, yeah, they know, they know all about it. We have, as indicated, taken a construction easement over the entire parcel, so that we need to get in there for some reason during the project.
Just out of curiosity, is that a 90-degree diameter cul-de-sac?
The right-of-way is 120 feet in diameter.
Oh, so it's even bigger, okay. All right. Any question?
I'll just add a, Mr. Griffin, if you could actually revise the waiver, the notary part has, I only got it as a PDA, it's a PDF, it says Middlesex, November 2015, and the dates are off. Just do that.
My apologies.
And we'll take care of that, once you do that.
So we can-
We won't sign it tonight, but-
Yeah, we can approve this in principle, and I would ask that the, the final form of the partial waiver be approved by the Planning Department, and if necessary, by the city solicitor.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on this? Have a motion? Yes?
You need to make a motion before you vote.
No, I was making a motion.
Oh, okay.
Ready?
Ready.
Okay. I'd move that the board grant the applicant's request for partial waiver from Condition 1, 3, and 6A of the board's March 22, 2016 decision for Lot, and only for Lot 1.
And these are partial waivers, we're not lifting the conditions that relate to them, they're just, they can, this lot can be sold before those conditions are complied with. That's what you said, right?
That is what I said.
Okay. Is there a second?
I said, no.
Mr. Rotano, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Chair votes in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Are we up to Cove Village?
Going anywhere.
Hull Street, we're going. I said, he's a guest for the evening.
No, he's got one more.
Oh, you have one more.
You totally are, I guess, for the evening, Mr. Griffin.
Hurry up, get in there on our way to A and B Burgers.
You guys will be on vacation momentarily.
Hull Street.
Hull Street, okay.
Hull Street?
8D?
Oh, okay.
We'll go back to 7 at the end.
Gotcha. Thank you.
The applicant, in this occasion, is MJP Properties, who's a residential builder in the Beverly area, and has actually won some awards for historic renovation projects in Danvers. But the principal has purchased a sale agreement to buy this 4.2-acre parcel of land on Hull Street, starting to get close to the Wenham Town Line. So Centerville School would be way off the page, sort of southwest of here. And we can see that this 4.2-acre parcel here is surrounded by residences here on Wedgmere, Gandhi, and Temi Road. These are all 15,000 square foot parcels approximately. This is in the R15 zoning district. And this large 4.2-acre parcel of land is mostly wet. We've identified on the plan, this is new flagged recently, about three acres of wetland and about 1.2 acres of uplands. Your OSRD ordinance describes a procedure to request this particular type of waiver where no more than two new building lots would be created, and so I think this is a certain other criteria on that as well. If we look at the potential receptors on the land or the land use, we have all wetlands back here, which is certainly a primary conservation area. In the upland portion of the site, we really don't have any sensitive uses of the land other than the water. So we've got, you know, no steep slopes, no prime farmland, no meadows, no valuable wildlife habitat, no historic sites, and no especially scenic views. It's really just, you know, a gradually sloping wooded upland area here with frontage on Wedgmere Road and Hull Street. So when we look at this from a development potential, we said, geez, you know, there really is no point in trying to bring in any new frontage, any new roadways. This is really a simple A&R-style development. We're proposing, you know, one, two, three houses, so one with frontage on Wedgmere, two with frontage on Hull Street. These would all have, you know, 15,000 square feet or more, as is required in the zoning district. They would all have 125 feet or more of frontage. We've shown on here the 25-foot buffer zones to the wetlands, so we're not proposing any activity in the 25-foot no-disturb zone, although I would note that certainly, you know, this lot, which we're calling Lot 1, and this lot, which we're calling Lot 2, will have to go to the Conservation Commission for approval because we have activities within the buffer zone to wetlands. The Lot 3 here is outside of the commission's jurisdiction, but again, it's a pretty straightforward development. We think that we, we think that we need the criteria for an OSRD waiver. I'm not sure there would be any benefit in actually really going through the process. I don't really see coming up with a substantially different development scheme, and the developer's willing to constrain each of the three lots with a provision that would prevent further creation of buildable lots, and we provided some language as part of our request that would hopefully achieve that. We'd like to come back to you with an A&R-style plan in September, and then go to the Conservation Commission and give permission to build these houses.
Questions from members of the board?
Question?
Yes.
Probably a question for planning. And I was reading the, the notes from Planning Department, and then hearing and seeing this presentation, which is asking for waiver for three residences where, I, I thought I was reading that there can be no more than two.
Two new.
That's the point.
So it's, it's two new lots, actually.
So two lots, if it was just two lots, they wouldn't-
Oh, we're turning one into three, so it's just two additional lots.
It's one additional lot.
One additional lot.
Two addition, two new lots.
Two additional.
One.
No, they could do two without having to come to us for an OSRD, right?
Correct.
Oh.
It's the third lot.
The fact that it's four acres triggers them to come to us for no SRD.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Right, more than two acres, right.
Four acres.
Four acres.
More than, oh.
More than two acres, yes, sir. Too many numbers.
Well, then I have another question.
I'm sorry, I just want to go back to this part of your staff report, which says that the board must make the following findings, no more than two building lots are created, so-
Two new building lots. There's already one building lot.
Oh, I see. Because it's already an existing lot. I got you, all right.
I know. It took us a while to get our heads.
Thank you. I'm with you now, all right? So, and what is the waiver requirement we're seeking?
So it's basically a waiver from having to go through the OSRD process. So the waiver's granting them relief from being an OSRD.
Do we have the authority to do that?
Yes.
It's right in the zoning.
You've done it before, you did it for, you did it for Bomack and Newman Road.
Where do we do it?
Bomack and Newman Road.
Bonad.
Bonad, yes, sorry. I keep doing that.
Oh, by, by Sally-
By Jewett.
By Sally Meligan.
Yeah. The lower road off of it, Jewett. And that was-
Well, may I ask this clarifying question now for planning? How is this different than Cross Lane? Cross Lane is-
Well, Cross Lane, they created a new street, and with new frontage.
So this is approved not required because there's no new street being put in? All the lots have frontage on-
All the lots have the frontage.
Existing way.
Our ordinance allows us to grant a waiver if they create new, two new building lots or fewer, but has three additional criteria they satisfy, which are set forth here, that they restrict the deed so that there aren't be, there won't be any additional building lots, delineate conservation areas, and the siting of new houses and associated site improvements conforms to the purposes and intent of the section.
Yes, and I would point out that we're not requesting, we're not looking to get any waivers from frontage requirements or lot area requirements as we would with Cross Lane, for example.
And we're not approving, we're not endorsing any A&Rs at this point. This is purely a process question. Do they have to go through OSD or not? OSRD or not?
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
The third condition is the applicant has satisfied the Planning Board that siting of the new houses and associated site improvements, including stormwater management, conform to the purposes and intent of the OSRD ordinance. We haven't got to that point, have we?
So what I've included in my application is a note that when we put single-family houses like this in front of the conservation, where we have work in the buffer zone, we typically take roof runoff from each of the houses, we put it into a dry well adjacent to the house, or, you know, somewhere close by, and use that to basically recharge the groundwater table and mitigate for the loss of recharge associated with constructing a driveway in the house. And so we would do that on all three of these houses.
Okay.
And where would that be, where would that appear in any condition, whether from this board or some other agency, that those stormwater management systems be put in?
It seems like if you grant a waiver, you could condition it on providing stormwater calculations for the single-family houses that meets conservation requirements, or something like that.
I have another question, if I could.
Go ahead.
Mr. Griffin, have you had a chance, or have the neigh, has the neighborhood had a chance to weigh in on this, since if we waive this OSRD, we, there's no public hearing, correct?
Correct, A&Rs are not public.
That's right.
That's right, and this waiver request is not a public hearing. However, the two buffer zone applications with the Conservation Commission will trigger public hearings for both of those houses, and, you know, certified letters will be sent out for those, too. I think that this particular house here is outside their jurisdiction, and, you know, I think if you look at it, it could go down today and pull a building permit application for this construction.
Yeah, I, I-
It would change at that point.
I, I don't disagree with you. I guess, I just want to know, has, has there been any attempt to speak, for example, to the, to the owners of 3 Wedgmere Road, or anything, anything like that? Has there been any contact with any of the neighbors?
Not yet.
Okay.
But it does look to me like, just the way it's configured, that, as Mr. Griffin indicated, a building permit can be pulled on the corner piece-
I agree.
And divide off the rest, as, and then come back later on those other two, and those, the only other hearing on those other two would be before the contract.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, I just was, just wanted to know.
Good point. Mr. Miller?
Can I, oh, I'm sorry, can I ask another question?
No, go ahead, please.
Go ahead, no, you go ahead, I'll go next.
I, I think you said that you, that the applicant would be willing to accept a deed restriction that would limit any further subdivision of the tract, is that correct?
I, I think the language is, refers to additional building lots, and I simply point out the distinction because we might want to sell portions of this land to a neighbor if they were interested in, you know, increasing the size of their parcel, or, you know, for some particular reason in the future. That's really not on the radar screen right now, but certainly it's not our intention to allow any additional building on the 4.2-acre parcel, other than what I've shown.
Okay. I, I think our city solicitor would have to review the restriction language, too, because that's a pretty tricky area, and I think the language that you proposed, I'm not sure it would pass muster, you know, about being exempt from the expiration requirements of line 8423.
Certainly is a tricky area, and we're coming in with an A&R approval, and, you know, I, I understand those can't be really conditioned either, so it's-
Right, so I think if we're going to go this way, we'd have to condition that our, our city solicitor be happy with the form of that restriction, because it's, I think, Mr. Griffin's correct, we don't care so much about slivers of land we cut off to add to the lots, but we can't have the result of those changes produce new building lots.
Wow, so nice.
That, that's the key. And that it does have to be a restriction that's as perpetual as if we can make it. We don't want it to expire 30 years from now, so, and that's where it gets tricky. So I guess if we're going to do this, I would require that the, that the city solicitor approve the form of the deed restriction, so that it conforms to this section A1. I think, two, they've basically given us tonight the, what are the resource areas, and I think other than the wetlands, there really are none, from what I can see. And item three is, that seems to have been satisfied, subject to our final stormwater management plans being submitted for the approval of our engineering department.
I have a question, because I don't have any issue with, with, with anything you just said. The question I had is whether we're doing this in the wrong order, in that the A&R plan needs to be presented first, because the ordinance says you can't waive the OSRD, it can waive the requirements of this section for any approval-not-required plan, and we haven't been presented with an A&R plan.
No, that's a good question.
So, in my view, while, you know, it seems like we're procedurally might be putting the cart in front of the horse, no, yeah, that's the way it goes. I hate, I always mix my metaphors, but, because what I don't want to do is just waive the OSRD and then not have the A&R plan in advance. So it may look exactly like that, but I think you got to draw the lot lines first, come back, and at the same time, perhaps even on the same day, we endorse the A&R plan, we could grant the waiver. But I think a premise of a waiver request is that there be an A&R plan that we've approved, endorsed.
Interesting.
I just sort of have this issue in marble head, and it's sort of fresh in my mind.
That's great, I like that. So I don't think we've, that changes much, because I think you've got a sense of our disposition tonight.
Well, in fact, that's what I needed, because if, if we were going to go through the OSRD process, there's a lot of work to do, and I wanted to start it, but, you can address those comments that were made, and come back in September with the A&R plan, and hopefully close this item out.
Good. I think that makes sense.
And maybe you can have the restriction worked on in the meanwhile for the city. Okay. So we'll table this, no need for a vote, and we'll table this to our next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I know we're all anxious to get off and watch the convention.
We have one more.
We have one more.
Yes.
Watch the convention.
And, uh-
No, I don't think so. I agree with that, any possibility of that?
Jeff's not coming. I'm-
You want to tee this up for us then?
Sure. So this is a simple request for bond reduction for Cove Village, 50 and 54 Boyle Street. They have done some of the work, let me see, I asked for an email. They have laid the binder, the electric is going to be energized by the end of next week. They've built two foundations and are framing on Lot 1, and went on the market last week, and they expect all the houses to be complete by June. Jeff has provided me, Mr. Ruda has provided me with a draft reduction of the letter of credit, which would need to be authorized if you authorize the bond reduction. City engineer and Planning Department worked with Mr. Ruda to set a, an amount that we are satisfied with, and the recommendation was made that this be the final bond reduction under the premise that if we go much below $100,000, there's really no interest in somebody coming and doing the work if that developer happens to leave. So he agreed to those terms and proposed that we be at 100, maybe at 106,598 as the new and final bond reduction.
That sounds like a motion. I wish you could make that. Somebody like to cooperate with Darlene just said? Ms. Flannery, did you just do that?
I didn't.
I seconded it.
Mr. Matts, any further discussion? All in favor? Are you abstaining?
Have to abstain.
Any other abstentions? Everyone in favor? Okay. Motion passes 801. Thank you for all the work on this. It's good.
A lot of work this month.
Um-
Any other business?
Since it's nice and early, I just want to let you all know that Crona, who we had approved a site plan and site plan modification for, has come back with an entirely new- approved a site plan and site plan modification for, has come back with an entirely new building.
I'm sorry, who's this?
Crona and they were at Fisher's.
Oh, this...
They're flow meters. They make pressure flow meters. It was a result of somebody in the family in the company not liking the design, and they pulled the building permit a week before it was set to be issued. So, they will have... Will be seeking, I believe, to come on our... To start their public hearing on our September meeting. The planning board has the ability for the chairperson to set a public hearing without setting it the way we traditionally do. So, I just want to let you know that, you know, the chairperson can actually set that hearing for September. We gave them a deadline to submit. That was the same as our standard deadline, so by August 8.
They'll have to submit everything.
Yep.
So, we are saying the chairman's going to set the date, but we've received no new documentation?
Well, we have, but they have not submitted enough for a filing, an application.
Okay.
We had a preliminary meeting today. They're going to come to our project review team again to kind of start the process over. But we've said if they submit an application, we would like the board to be acceptable, I guess, but if they submit an application by August 8, that we could actually hold the public hearing and strike the public hearing in September rather than setting it in September. Their... The proposal is to demolish the building and construct a new building.
This is an ITV building.
This is the one that was the...
Across the street.
Across the street.
The groundbreaking for high res was yesterday, that other one.
Oh, is that... Wow, so they're moving right along.
They're moving right along.
Darlene, is the new building bigger? Have you seen?
It's... It's... So, there's one large manufacturing building and a small 20,000-square-foot office building with a connector on the second story. It is more square footage, but not necessarily the site... It's a different site layout.
Is it oriented to the south so that they can put those solar panels on?
Well, in fact, today, they asked if there were any regulations regarding solar panels, so they are anticipating that they will be...
It's on the flight path, right, the FAA?
It is. No, that one's not. That's the other one.
Oh.
Yeah.
So, are there solar regulations?
No, no. I mean, they're welcome to install solar panels. They're exempt from the height requirement for the city.
So, are we considering adding them to... As a public hearing item in September?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think... You can't really act on it without any application, but I'm giving you the heads-up that I think that...
Does anybody object to my giving them permission to do this in September?
No.
Good to know. I've got my back covered.
We got your back, all right?
Thank you. So, we can do that now? Well, there's nothing...
Can't really vote on it.
Because it hasn't been a formal application. This is just a heads-up.
Darlene, I'll have to prove it in August. All right, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay. Thank you all for your attendance tonight.
Thank you.
Have a very good rest of the summer, as the...
Yeah.
See you in September.
Yeah, thanks.
It'll be September.
To where?